Today is Wednesday, January 26th, and we're here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast. And if you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Right on time.
You were right on time. I thought for sure you weren't going to be here for like another three minutes. All right, we're going to move into public comment, and we do have one individual signed up this morning, Diana Downs. If you'd join us over here at this microphone, please. Thank you.
This one or that one?
The one with the black chair. And then state your name and address for the record.
My home address or my Marion County employee address?
Home address.
Your home address.
Home address. I can't talk through my mask.
No, that's just fine. While you're public speaking, you can remove the mask.
Thank you. My name's Diana Downs. My home address is 3875 Meadowlawn Loop, Southeast Salem. Good morning. As I said, my name's Diana Downs. I'm an employee of Marion County. I'm also an officer for Marion County Employees Association, the union that represents a good portion of the employees of Marion County. As you're aware, the union and the county have open negotiations for a new contract. Since the last time we negotiated our contract in 2019, the world has been turned upside down. In the middle of a global pandemic that was only supposed to last a few months, skyrocketing inflation, school and office closures at a moment's notice, and a seemingly never-ending series of other crises like wildfires and ice storms, the employees of Marion County have never wavered in their commitment to provide the best, highest-quality public service to the people of Marion County. We've showed up. We've come to work. We've been flexible. We have gone above and beyond to keep the county running. On top of this, many of us have a responsibility as caregivers for the people around us. We're caring for children when schools and daycares close, for our family members who may be medically vulnerable. Many of us have seen people in our lives, sometimes our coworkers, pass away during this pandemic. As a result of working in these conditions for many years, several years, many of us are experiencing compassion fatigue and other mental health challenges. Employees are tired, burned out, and totally frustrated. We're entering these negotiations with clear direction from our coworkers at Marion County. Employees are concerned about recruitment and retention, safety issues related to COVID, and possibly more than anything else, employee morale. Our members expect movement on all of these issues in these negotiations. We also strongly believe that these are issues that affect management and labor alike, and we hope that we will be able to have constructive dialogue, leading to mutually agreeable solutions. We also cannot ignore the elephant in the room, which is the economic climate we are currently negotiating in. As I'm sure everyone knows, the consumer price index rose to 7% last month. Salem housing prices in December were up 15.7% year-over-year. The average cost of renting a one-bedroom apartment in Salem is $1,049, up 5%. The average three-bedroom apartment in Salem is $1,875, an 18% increase. To the employees of Marion County, these are not abstract statistics. We notice their effects every time we go to the grocery store, we fill up at the pump, or we pay our rent. We know that our paychecks aren't going as far as they used to, and that our real earnings are declining. We also know that minimum wage is increasing. This is leading to wage compression. From the perspective of the employees, this is not a tolerable situation, and it's one that we will seek to address in these negotiations. Finally, we would like to talk about how we intend to conduct ourselves in these negotiations and what we expect in return. First and foremost, we're committing to, and we expect to see in return, genuine, good-faith efforts to reach an agreement that not only works for both parties, but one that addresses the underlying agreements and problems both sides are seeking to resolve. From our point of view, this would mean that we would just not see the rewording of what's already our contract, or proposing what already exists in policy, but there would be genuine effort to truly hear the concerns underlying the proposals being brought forward. I lost my place. Sorry.
Doing great.
And to work to address them in the contract. It also means that we are committing to truly listen to the issues and concerns you're raising at the bargaining table. While we know there will be disagreements about issues, sometimes very deep disagreements, we will maintain respectful communication at the bargaining table, and we'll seek to collaboratively solve problems wherever possible. We're also making a commitment to be communicative, to be honest, to be forthright, and to be efficient as much as possible during our time together. Again, we hope that the county is able to make a similar commitment in these negotiations. Additionally, we hope that you, the Board of Commissioners, will commit and to support this as well. This was the opening statement we presented at the first bargaining session, and we wanted to share that with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diana. I appreciate you coming and sharing that.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to move on to a presentation from a person we haven't seen in a minute, it feels like. Katrina Rothenberger is going to give us a COVID-19 update.
Good morning. It's nice to be back.
Nice to see you.
Katrina Rothenberger, Public Health Division Director with Marion County Health and Human Services. And I'm on the agenda twice today, so I'm just going to stay up here after my presentation, if that's okay.
Fine by me.
All right. So, I wanted to talk about three things today. One is how our public health goals have shifted for the Omicron surge, vaccination, and testing. I also wanted to share that we are experiencing a surge right now, and our seven-day daily case average is 846 cases. The percent positivity throughout the pandemic has hovered around 9%, and with this most recent surge, has pushed that pandemic total up to 11%. So, clearly, this is really unmanageable for our team, and so we needed to make some choices on how we're going to shift our public health goals to, one, prevent severe disease and death, and, two, keep kids in school. So, preventing severe disease and death is basically us promoting vaccinations, including boosters, testing, and health education, communication, and discontinuing universal case investigations, to focus on outbreaks in high-consequence settings like schools, daycares, long-term care facilities, shelters, and other congregate settings that are at risk for severe disease and death. This means that someone who reports a positive COVID test to us will most likely not get a call back or a letter in the mail unless they are part of one of those high-consequence settings like an outbreak or long-term care facility. We'll prioritize the calls from these high-consequence congregate settings, and they will get our first priority, which means we've spent the last two weeks shifting our team to focus on the school and daycare team and the long-term care team. So, if you're just doing, not just doing, but if you were doing case investigation and calling people every day, then you're now assigned to either the school team or the long-term care congregate team. And this has been a really large shift for our team because, you know, we just can't keep up with the number of cases, which is forcing us to make this shift. Omicron is less severe, but more transmissible, and we have a shortened isolation period of five days. So, by the time we'd even hear about a case, it's basically your isolation's probably almost over. And it's been a shift for our team because they're all really hard workers and used to doing A-plus work, and now it feels like we just can't keep up and like we're doing B or C-grade work. But we're really trying to prioritize those high-consequence settings and focus on limiting the amount of data and information that these settings share with us. So, our secondary goal, keeping kids in school, is really referring to how we work with the schools on reporting and our ability to offer technical assistance. So, our schools team had called most probably all the school districts in Marion County to talk with them about what would make their lives easier. And reporting to us daily was a struggle. And so, they would report all sorts of information, the language spoken at home, name, date of birth, and contacts. And what we decided is that their time is better spent reducing transmission in schools, especially in those high-acuity areas. And so, we had worked with our health officer in the school districts to say, okay, let's pare down what you're sharing with us, just cases. We don't care about close contacts. And you can report either weekly or biweekly. So, that felt really supportive with our school partners, and their focus and energy is going to be on the school and not just reporting data to us, because it's not really making an impact. Their work on the ground really is. So, we feel pretty good about that, and then we're going to start making similar shifts with long-term care facilities. We want to make sure that we're there for providing PPE, which we've had an increase in requests lately, and any technical assistance that they may need for isolation or quarantining of cases in those settings. Because of these changes, our data quality will diminish, and we'll just be able to really share the number of cases and the number of positive and negative tests. And even our death and hospitalization data will not be accurate anymore because we used to go through data systems to try and identify, excuse me, cases and hospitalizations, but that is just not possible. So, we're basically reporting what gets reported to us. And with the increase in home tests as well, a lot of people don't report those to us, which is fine, because, you know, they're probably not in a healthcare setting, or they want to take a test to, for whatever reason, they might be sick or want to do something fun. So, those are also not being reported to us. So, I want everyone to understand, our data will be diminished in its quality. We won't be able to identify the number of cases associated with many outbreaks as well, and where all these cases are coming from, except for those areas, long-term care, schools, daycares. So, we feel like this will help us make an impact on severe disease and death. And so, we've shifted away from prevent the spread of COVID. We're still trying to do that through vaccinations, PPE, and testing. However, it's not necessarily completely possible for us to reduce transmission in every setting. So, we're really focusing on those areas where transmission can occur easily, and there's potential for severe disease and death. And I did want to thank our team, and especially someone I haven't really mentioned yet here is Wendy Zeiger. She's been supporting this team as their public health nurse manager throughout the duration of the pandemic, and she also oversees our communicable disease team. And she's probably had to hire more people than any other manager through this whole pandemic, and she provided support, still does, for all of her team. And she's had a random weird schedule throughout the pandemic. She's worked weekends, early in the morning, late at night, and so I just wanted to have a special shout-out for her. Next is about vaccinations. So, 76.4% of the population 18 and over in Marion County has had at least one dose of the COVID vaccine, which is just over 200,000 people. And 64.9% of people of all ages in Marion County have had at least one dose of the vaccine, which is 226,663 people. And there are still a lot of vaccination clinics going on in Marion County, and those are listed on our website. At the fairgrounds, all three vaccines, including pediatric vaccines, are available every day, Monday through Saturday, 12 to 7, and Sundays, 11 to 4. And then, at the Salem Center Mall, there are vaccination events, and I'm not sure of the hours on that. And Santee M Hospital and Clinic, go to their website for more information and to sign up for a time slot. And there's also a Vaccine Finder on the Oregon Health Authority website. And for testing, which is like the hot topic right now, everybody's trying to find a test, and they're just really hard to find, especially the at-home ones right now. You have to like line up outside of the pharmacy when they get their shipment in at 8 o'clock in the morning, or whenever they open. So, it's really hard to get those right now. I do know that you can buy some on Amazon. You can buy some directly from the iHealth website and through the USPS, which I'll talk about a little bit more. Right now, at the fairgrounds, the same hours as the vaccinations, 12, Monday through Saturday, 12 to 7, and Sundays, 11 to 4, they do have PCR testing available. And I believe the return on those is probably two to four days. And on January 29th, there will be a special testing event in Woodburn at Centennial Park in partnership with Santee M Hospital, or no, excuse me, University of Oregon, I think. They're using their saliva test, and those results are back in two to four days. They don't need a doctor's note, or insurance, or ID, actually. Santee M Hospital, I would just say, check out their website. There's a few more directions on how to sign up and get a test out there. And then, the USPS COVID at-home testing, these are four tests with a limit of one per residential address, and it's part of the federal program to provide free at-home COVID-19 tests with free shipping to every residential address and residential PO box. They can't be ordered for business addresses or business PO boxes, and the orders will ship for free starting in late January. And they will ship within seven to 12 days. They can also be ordered online or by phone. And the website is www.covidtest.gov. I ordered some personally, and they were pretty easy to, it was a super quick form. And I haven't got them yet, but I think I just ordered them on Monday, so I'll let you know when they come in.
I ordered mine.
Yeah.
On Monday. I'll see.
Okay. So, that, I believe, is all I wanted to share related to COVID. I haven't been here in a while, so I don't know if there's any questions or burning issues to talk about.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, I'm not entirely clear, and it appears that the public isn't entirely clear either, on what the county is going to be doing in certain settings for providing them the letter. So, recently, a citizen reached out to me, and she said that she went to work and then was sent home because I'd never received a letter from the county for my return to work. I've called multiple times and still nothing. And by all means, I let her know that we're very overwhelmed. But, and she works for a school, a local school district.
Okay.
And so, I'm wondering if there's a way to create some communication externally to help people understand that we're likely not going to be sending them that letter anymore, and that there's particular steps they need to follow with their employer. But in addition to that, I think the small businesses throughout the county that have really relied on that letter for safety in their space are not getting this message, and so I want to be able to help support that. So, what does that look like?
Yeah. So, I'm sorry they didn't get a person to answer the phone. We have four people in our phone bank right now.
Yeah.
And we do have, there's also an OHA line that folks can call as well, and I think we got more calls than they did. So, anyway, in this transition period, we haven't quite figured out exactly, we haven't really made a decision around the work release letters for people outside of Marion County. So, if someone asks, we have provided it, but they had to like ask via email. But I think you're right in saying, like, we're probably not going to get to it. We should probably discontinue, because it's not done in a way that's like very systematic, and only some folks are getting through to us. So, and the other thing is also about, some employers require a test to return to work.
Right.
And that is not something that public health really can track or support with a test. The issue is, especially for healthcare workers, they can get released from isolation if they test negative on day five. And that's, for the general public, they can be released on day five and don't necessarily need that test. So, I would really, I've been sharing the message, like, let's save these for our healthcare workers and the people who have to, you know, have a test to actually be safe in returning to work so they don't spread it in their healthcare setting. So, but requiring a letter or a negative test to return to work is probably something we do need to move away from and message effectively, like you mentioned.
Okay. I mean, I just think we're probably at a point in this pandemic where we need to start taking independent responsibility for ourselves and those around us. And I feel like this is the transition point to do that, specifically because of the burden that falls on public health and the inability to execute like you'd like to. But I guess, and we can follow up after this, there seems to be, you'd mentioned high-consequence settings, and kind of what those protocols look like. I just want to make sure that the people that are living or working in those settings fully understand what is and isn't being offered to them. These, I don't even know that those particular employers are messaging it very well, and they seem to want to be making it our responsibility. And it is the Health Department. So, if that's not the case, then maybe we need to do a better job of communicating externally, so that way people feel good about what their role is.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. We have been communicating really well, I feel like, with the schools. We send them weekly emails for the past couple of weeks on what our approach has been. But as an employer, we haven't really gotten into that, what your role is as an employer. So, yeah, we can certainly work on that. That's a really good point.
I know that the school districts are doing the test to stay for work-related exposures. But, so last night, there was a school board meeting for Salem Kaiser, and there was an update provided that they're doing test to stay for staff who are exposed in their buildings, but not externally. So, if they have a community exposure, then they don't have the opportunity to test. And so, are we trying to help navigate, it's so critical to keep schools open, and I really appreciate all the work your team is doing to help those schools keep that going. I just wonder if there's a way that we can try to provide additional support to those educators who are living their lives, so they can be in the schools. So, I don't need an answer right now. I'd just be brainstorming what that looks like. I'd like to help all the districts in Marion County be able to keep their classrooms open.
Yeah. We should be getting our first shipment of the at-home tests at some point this week or very soon. And we could potentially give some to schools. We are going to prioritize the group homes first.
Sure.
Because they're not getting a direct shipment from OHA, and some other, and like Northwest Senior Disability Services and other areas that can give them to their members. But we could talk internally about our schools, too.
Okay, great. Maybe we'll just follow up and have a meeting with some of the districts to see what that need looks like.
Okay.
I think they would know what their needs are better, obviously, than myself, to be able to support those teachers with the community spread impact. Did you have any questions, Commissioner?
No, I just think these changes are overdue. So, I'm glad you're moving in that direction, and I concur that we want to make sure that all, as many employers as possible know about these changes, because there could be folks looking for letters that aren't going to come, and potentially that could jam them up. So, whatever we can do to get the word out that we will not be sending letters anymore is really important.
Mr. Campbell?
Well, I was just going to say, we have some good organizations that can help get that out.
I agree.
To chambers and SEDCor and small business, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk with them, too, and do a presentation.
I have a note. John and I will be following up.
Okay.
And just before we let you go on this particular topic, just an extended grateful appreciation for all the work that you've done to lead this, and also your team. Actually, I saw Diana in the hallway. I was like, gosh, I know that person. I said hello, and then I was like, hmm. But I've only met her once in person. The rest has been on Zoom for over a year. So, thank you, Diana, to you and your team for all the efforts you've made community-wise. It's made a difference, and I think Marion County still leads the effort of being person-focused, and that really matters. So, thanks for your investment in that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
So, are you done with COVID?
No.
You said before, I know you're not going to run away, but we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Commissioner Willis, would you please read the consent?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Madam Chair, I move the consent agenda. Under Health and Human Services, appoint an order, approve an order, excuse me, appointing Ryan Matthews as the Marion County Community Mental Health Program Director effective January 26, 2022. I just want to say, Ryan Matthews has also done a phenomenal job as our Health Department, what do we call that, director? Department head? Anyway.
Guru?
Guru.
Administrator.
Administrator, that's the word. So, thank you, Ryan, for your work. Under Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $39,076.80 for Q Limited Partnership, and approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $42,973.91.
Motion second.
Maggitt and Modish Corporation.
Second motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to action items. Under the first action item, Board of Commissioners Board Committee Appointments, Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee, consider approval of board orders appointing Brian Carrera, Stephanie McClung, Rebecca Shivers-Singletary, and Scott Heasacker, and reappointing Dan Mullen to the Ambulance Service Area ASA Advisory Committee, with terms ending January 31, 2025, and revising the term end date for Brian Butler to January 31, 2024, to align with ASA bylaws. And Katrina, you're up again.
All right. Thank you. The Ambulance Service Area Committee represents a cross-section of entities, including private, public, rural, and urban folks. Additional members from our stakeholder groups such as, excuse me, Katrina Rothenberger. Do I need to introduce myself again?
Yes, but that's okay. I was just not going to interrupt you.
Katrina Rothenberger, Public Health Division Director, and here seeking approval to appoint these folks to our Ambulance Service Area Committee. And several have joined with me today, so if you have any questions, please ask them.
I'm trying to help cherry out over here.
Thank you. So, Brian Carrera, Stephanie McClung, Rebecca Shivers-Singletary, and Scott Sehaker, Heasacker, sorry, are would-be newly appointed members to the ASA Committee. Brian from Salem Fire represents ASA 1, Stephanie from Jefferson, ASA 8, Rebecca, ASA 9, and Turner. And Scott Heasacker is with Woodburn Ambulance. Dan Mullen has served on the ASA since his original appointment in July of 2016 as the Assistant Chief of the St. Paul Fire District, and represents ASA Service Area 3. And Brian Butler, who has served on the ASA since his original appointment in 2017, Operations Chief for the Kaiser Fire District, and represents ASA Service Area 2. So, I think I'll leave it at that, and if you... And if you have questions for the ASA newly appointees or they could share a little bit about themselves.
Do you have any questions before I dive in? Okay, well, I would actually love for you each to inter- and identify yourself for the record. So your name and city, and then um, why you want to do this. So why don't we start over there with Salem Fire?
Do I just?
Nope, just talk, I think you just talked.
My name's uh, Brian Carrer. I'm the Deputy Chief of Training EMS for Salem Fire, and I wanted to, because I was appointed.
Ah, that's why you make the big bucks.
Voluntar- yes, so. But I, this is my second time around, so I was at from fifteen to seventeen, so um, I'm, I'm happy to be here.
Great, nice to meet you, thank you.
Good morning, thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Dan Mullen, St. Paul Fire District, live on just north of town on River Road. Um, my goal is that every person who lives in Marion County passes through, tours, et cetera, gets quality care. And representing the smallest ASA, one of the last few volunteer ones, that's kind of our mission on the north end of the county, is to make sure we have a lot of traffic and we're trying to provide the best services possible for those people. So my role is not to be a thorn in Sean's rear end, but more or less, we um come together and make sure that we're doing the best job for our citizens.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Scott Heesacker, and I'm the Operations Chief for the Woodburn Fire District. And uh, we provide uh, fire-based uh, emergency response to the city of Woodburn and surrounding areas. And we do not provide ambulance transport, different than some of the other fire agencies in Marion County. Uh, we work in concert with the Woodburn Ambulance Service in getting those patients the care they need, and then ultimately the transport to the hospital. So my job in coming to this board and seeking this appointment would be to represent the non-transporting fire service uh, in Marion County and ensuring that those citizens get the best emergency care uh, they can. So uh, we have started an all uh, paramedic or ALS first response. So our fire engines that show up first response on these calls uh, have a paramedic service. And so uh, we're working together with Sean and the Woodburn Ambulance Service to provide our county residents with the best care possible.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I s- I feel like I met you last year, maybe during a vaccine clinic.
At the fair.
Yeah, okay.
We were at the fair.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Isn't it fun that that's portable?
Yeah.
You do karaoke with it.
Yeah, okay. That scares me a little.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Stephanie McClung, I'm the EMS Manager at Jefferson Fire. Um, and I inherited this position. Our previous uh, Fire Chief or Assistant Chief retired after many years serving on this committee. So I welcome this opportunity. Um, I've been involved in a couple other committees, um, the Area Trauma Advisory Board and things of that nature. And I um, very much enjoy learning more about this system. And I welcome any opportunity to uh, to expand my horizons, so to speak, and have a positive impact on the EMS world. It's a complex little system, and uh, there's a lot of things that can be done to improve it. So I look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you. I guess, welcome to the team. All right, so then Sean.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I just wanted to take a moment as Chair of the Committee to-
Be sure to introduce yourself for the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sean Baird, uh, Chair of the AS Ambulance Service Advisory Committee for Marion County and with Woodburn Ambulance. And I just wanted to take a moment to um, thank everyone who is stepping up to participate in the Committee. These are all folks that I've known for many years. Uh, and uh, Scott's the newest member, but certainly gotten very engaged in the last couple of years. And the work the Committee is going to be doing, uh, that they will be participating over the next cycle is an update of our plan, uh, which is, happens on a periodic basis. And we work with the Oregon Health Authority and uh, and the Committee to make sure that we're meeting all of the proper statutory requirements as well as anything that, that we as Marion County need to do to make sure that our citizens are served to the best possible degree. So we have a challenging year ahead, and I thank everybody as Chair for them coming forward and participating.
Thank you. Katrina, I have one question, and I, just because it's really not listed here. Is, does the ASA encompass also the Canyons? Are there members from up C N E M on this board?
Yes. So every ASA is represented on the ASA Board except for Polk One Fire that has a small piece of um, like that River Road area, the bridge, but I don't know what that's called.
It's okay.
Yeah, South Salem.
And they do participate, but they just haven't accepted it.
Right. I asked all of the folks who hold the ASA if they wanted to be rep- like actually board-appointed because a, a lot of these folks attend the meetings but without an official board appointment. And they attend, um, Mike Mayfield attends, but um, they did not put forward an application.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Cameron?
No.
I'm just grateful for your service. Uh, gotten to Scott a little bit, uh, just my time visiting up north. And I'm really glad that you're on this Committee. I think you're going to be a great addition. I just like the way you guys operate. We have sort of a culture of um, service, and I think Woodburn uh, Fire really embodies that culture. And um, so that's wonderful. Wonderful when you, when you have folks that sort of think about public service as a priority. Um, and that's a value we have. So I'm really grateful for your, your culture up there and your service, and I think it's going to be great. Um, and Sean, as always, thank you for your leadership. Um, are you still in charge of the National Association as well?
Painfully so.
Something I like to remind people. Sean, Sean does this for us, but he also leads the charge nationally.
Yeah, I just flew home uh, last night uh, in order to be here this morning from a, a meeting of our board. And I, and I would just say, you know, Katrina's comments earlier about where we are in the stage with the public health emergency, and we are all so hopeful that uh, that we're maybe crossing an arc at some point in the, in the hopefully near future. But it has been a, a very challenging time for emergency services uh, as it has been for uh, public health. Uh, recently, a real uptick, and that's, that's nationwide. And uh, certainly, we're in Marion County doing our best to address it, but we're, we're not alone in this situation.
Well, we're blessed to have somebody with your expertise um, on board. And I also want to thank you personally for your partnership with us getting vaccines out quickly in the mobile clinics. I think you guys really sort of um, set the standard for the rest of the state in terms of like, what is, what does a mobile vaccine clinic look like? And how can we be really flexible and, and do this? Um, that was, that was hard, and, and you did it very fast. I mean, that was something that was done with not a lot of notice. We just said, Sean, can you help us? We're trying to get vaccine out. Um, and so I really appreciate that. Oh?
Is that real?
We're gonna have to cut this short.
Yeah, so we just need to pause for a few minutes and head outside, and we'll come back when it's over. All right. Okay, we're back from the non-emergency. Uh, we're going to resume the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, and continue with our first action item for Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee. Um, Commissioner Cameron, would you please make the motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to consider wait to approve the Board of Orders appointing Brian Carrera, Stephanie McClue, uh, Rebecca Shivers Singletary, Scott Hetzaker, and reappointing Dan Mullen to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee with terms ending January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and revising the term end date for Brian Butler to January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four to align the ASA with ASA bylaws.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Just, I, I just want to say thank you for your service, uh, to all of you for, not only for this, what you're doing, but when you're out in the communities, just like what we have to experience right here. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I just echo what Commissioner Willis said before the fire alarm went off, that um, Woodburn and Woodburn, Woodburn Ambulance, Woodburn Fire really kind of did set the tone statewide. And I know we've seen that, we've heard, heard that. But more importantly, all of the fire service agencies that supported um, the original kind of lift of getting vaccines out into the community, it was either with your EMTs, your, you know, your paramedics, whatever. Thank you for doing that. Um, it was a concept that I think that other public health kind of were challenged to figure out how to reach. And because of your partnership and the way we do things here in Marion County, you guys just lifted it and made it happen, and made it look so easy. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for continuing to want to do that, to support all the people that live here and that will be here through tourism and visits and all the things in the future. You're really great. So, that being said, we have a motion and a second, so I'll call for the vote. Um, and I forgot how to do it all of a sudden, but all those in favor, please say aye.
Say aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously, and later we'll bring this back so Commissioner Willis can vote in support as well. Thank you for being here, and I have no idea what that was, but probably saying that we're cleared, thanks to Salem Fire. Have a great day, and thanks for your service. All right, we're going to move on to item number two under Action for Public Works to Consider Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Contract for Services with Quincy Engineering, Inc. to add four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, five dollars and eighty-nine cents for a new contract total of one million, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars and nineteen cents to provide construction contract administration and construction engineering and inspection services for the Lancaster Drive Center Street to Monroe Avenue Improvement Project through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And we get to have a presentation by Ryan Carrer.
You do, thanks. Uh, for the record, Ryan Carrer, Marion County Capital Projects Manager. Um, do you want me to hold for just a minute, or go ahead and keep going?
Please keep going.
So today I'm here to talk to you about our Lancaster Drive Center Street to Monroe Avenue project and our amendment with Quincy Engineering Amendment Two. So the project's located in northeast Salem. Uh, it's about point four or five miles long. Um, and you can see here on the map where it is on, on Lancaster. Whoop. Sorry about that. So this is a federally funded project. Project scope includes rehabilitating Lancaster, uh, new sidewalks, curbs, driveway grade corrections, uh, raising the curb line up to smooth out those driveways. We also are going to consolidate access points wherever possible. And we, um, excuse me, we have been working with the local property owners, and we're almost through the right-of-way acquisition phase and, and finalizing those coordination efforts. So there will be constructing, we'll be constructing an advanced pedestrian co- crossing at Monroe. And then we'll be doing this work at night. And we originally contracted with Quincy Engineering. They actually did the design, and we included an option to extend through construction, which is what we're talking about now. So our consultant's Quincy Engineering. Uh, the contract amendment adds construction administration, inspection, survey, and engineering services. Our schedule is we plan to bid and start the project in spring of twenty-twenty-two and complete the project in summer of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, because of paving windows, we just don't anticipate finalizing this project in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. Um, our contract budget, the original budget was seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars for design and right-of-way services. The amendment for construction services would add four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand and six dollars. So our new contract total is one million, two-hundred-and-ten-dollar, thousand dollars and, one million, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars. So that is everything I have for you today. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. I'm super excited to see this get done. I grew up kind of behind this intersection for a period of my life, and I can still hear the sound of the front of vehicles scrape as they go flying into that parking lot because there's such a ridiculous like raid. So this will fix that. And I think people, uh, maybe should put up warning signs when it's done, that they, you know, so they're aware. I think people don't pay attention to the transition now, and maybe they'll shoot faster into the parking lot. It would create a danger in the future because there won't be like quite such a hop. Uh, but this is great, thank you for taking it on.
Good, and that, that's definitely one of the biggest things we wanted to address with this project, is allowing people to get in and out of those parking lots a little easier. They have to get out onto Lancaster so slowly right now that it can create a traffic hazard.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Cameron, do you have anything?
No, I know this intersection here, this strip, how, how long is it?
Uh, point four or five miles is how long our project is.
Four or five? And, and just, just for the record, so this isn't even any pavement? This is just all the right-of-way consulting services to get this design going, right?
That's correct. This is actually our, our design and construction oversight. So because this is a federally funded project, there's a lot of construction oversight tasks uh, that come along with it. Normally, we, we handle those in-house, but this project, since it's a nighttime, going to do occur at night, we didn't have the capacity to send one of our inspectors out purely on this project at night. So we wanted to do that. And then along with that, we're, we're actually going to have them also help with things like uh, overseeing the quality assurance, reviewing subcontract, contracts to make sure they're federally compliant, um, and uh, various other tasks that come along with contract administration.
Great. Commissioner, anything?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number Two to the Contract for Services with Quincy Engineering Incorporated to add four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, five dollars and eighty-nine cents for a new contract total of one million, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, four, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars and nineteen cents to provide the construction, contract administration, and construction engineering and inspection services for Lancaster Drive Center Street to Monroe Avenue Improvement Project through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ryan, for your work on this.
Thank you, guys.
Nice to see you, have a great day. And next, we're going to hear from Commander Kevin Carvandi in the Sheriff's Office to consider approval of the incoming funds in our governmental agreement with Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, CJC, in the amount of four million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents for the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three justice reinvestment grant, retroactive from July one, twenty-twenty-one through June thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Chair, members of the Board, for the record, Commander Kevin Carvandi, Sheriff's Office, uh, Community Corrections Division. And uh, just a, a quick background to provide some context. As the Board's aware, uh, House Bill thirty-one ninety-four in the, uh, passed in two thousand thirteen, which created the, the Justice Reinvestment Program and the funding associated with that. It also designated the Criminal Justice Commission, the CJC, as the uh, Grant Funding Administrator. And really, the funding was a, a commitment to investing in our local communities and public safety systems to financially support local counties in adhering to the goals of justice reinvestment, which are enhancing public safety, holding offenders accountable, uh, reducing recidivism, and ultimately reducing our prison population. Uh, as with each biennium, uh, Justice Reinvestment, JRI, application is due to the CJC. And also as part of the process, uh, each county's local public safety coordinating council is responsible for submitting the application. So on behalf of the council, uh, the Sheriff's Office submitted uh, our county's justice reinvestment application, our main and supplemental applications back in August. Uh, in November of last year, we received our initial award notice from the CJC, essentially letting us know that we were fully funded in, in both our main and supplemental, which is awesome, awesome news for us. And I think also too, it's an affirmation from the CJC that uh, we're supported and moving in the right direction, albeit not perfect, but moving in the, in the right direction. Now, the main applications are breaking down the total funding. Uh, the main application was just over four million. Supplemental was just over nine-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars for the total of the four point, roughly four-point-nine million dollars. Uh, just to recap in terms of our uh, Marion County Justice Reinvestment efforts, which include, we, we do provide both prison uh, diversion and pri- prison reentry programming that are designed to meet the goals of justice reinvestment through evidence-based principles and programming. We have nine distinct programs. The two programs, uh, flagship programs that the Board is most familiar with is our Senate Bill four sixteen, Prison Diversion Program, as well as SOAR, Student Opportunity for Achieving Results. I think it's the accumulation of all the programs working together, moving forward, that are helping us with our positive effects with, with regards to meeting the goals of JRI. Uh, specifically with this biennium, we also are focused on enhancing culturally responsive services in several different areas. Uh, the first being increasing the number of gender-specific services provided for women. Uh, and Commissioner, I know we've talked a little bit about SOAR. Uh, that's, that's part of this. Also, Link Up, our co-occurring mental health and substance use mentor program that just initiated this month, uh, expanding to uh, females as well. Also increasing capacity for our JRI programs to provide services in Spanish through Spanish-speaking staff in all of our programs. And uh, one thing in particular that we're excited about is uh, piling our new peer support program uh, to help uh, members of historically underserved communities connect and engage with not just our justice reinvestment programs, but uh, community, uh, community resources. And the actual name of it, we're solidifying the name, uh, it is the Resilience and Recovery Project, Marion County Peer Mentor Program. Uh, next Board Session, so next week, you'll have a chance to meet uh, Letitia Navarro, uh, uh, who's the Executive Director- Letitia Navarro, who's the executive director of the Pathfinder Network and who we are proposing contracting with for the, the peer mentors. And the, what the model looks like is inserting these peer mentors, working out of our public safety building. So, one lesson that we learned and a valuable one over the years when we're implementing our prison reentry and diversion programs is the value of obviously our, our counselors, our CADCs, but also the peer mentors. Just that, that ability, and it kind of makes sense, that ability to connect with them, to bond with them, to get to build rapport with them, and to get them engaged with that buy-in is significant. And if we can get that, we're in great shape. And so, bringing them in-house, trying to, you know, focus on that highest level of customer service and make it also much more accessible for our POs to refer face-to-face, you're in the lobby, and let's move forward. So, we are excited about that as well. And just, just to recap, and generally speaking, you know, we are seeing continued positive outcomes with regards to accomplishing the JRI goals. In terms of, I know the CJC did a mini presentation. Commissioner Cameron was there at the last week's Public Safety Coordinating Council, touched a little bit on the prison population. Didn't cover recidivism, but if you go on the dashboards, there's, there's movement in the correct direction for us in both those areas. And at the same time, holding folks accountable and, and keeping public safety up front, first and foremost. This particular contract with the CJC, we received last month. We're processing it now. It is retroactive to July one, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. And I believe that's all I have, and I'm available for any questions.
So, I just, I, because you, you really provide a thorough report, and sometimes I get stuck at the very beginning. So, for the, we spend about two point five million dollars a year. So, the grant is almost five million, so we break that in half. I did the math, but I don't want to get at all the tiny little numbers on justice reinvestment. So, for the person on the, and I know that you touched on it, but can you just, two point five million dollars a year is a lot of money. And I, and I, and I think it's, everything that we do in justice reinvestment is profound. But I think a lot of people don't really understand what that means. So, can you just give a, a basic, what do we get for two point five million dollars?
Sure.
What kind of lives are impacted?
Yeah, you bet. So, real quick, big picture in terms of funding streams. I know we've covered this in previous sessions. To, to, to run community corrections in Marion County, we have roughly two thousand eight hundred individuals on some form of supervision, post-prison supervision, probation, that we're responsible for. I would say our main program is supervision, supervision sanctions and services. And this is from our grant and aid from the State Department of Corrections. Our total biennial budget is roughly thirty-four million. Twenty-seven point five grant and aid, five million JRI. I believe it's another million for Measure Fifty-seven, which funds SOAR, and the half million is FSAP, Family Sentencing Alternative Program. So, it's, it's like all, these four different primary funding streams, providing services to a vast array of our clients on supervision, specific to JRI and the, and the two and a half million or five over the biennium. It helps fund nine different programs. Our Senate Bill four sixteen, Prison Diversion Program, this is a contract that we have with several different players, Bridgeway Recovery Services, the District Attorney's Office, funding a couple PO positions, DA, CADC mentor. It, it takes a bit to, to, just to have the infrastructure in place to make these programs run. Our transition from, I mean, I go through every single one, but our transition from jail to community program, also a contract with the Pathfinder Network, funds multiple positions with them, Certified Alcohol and Drug Counselor, bilingual facilitator, and, and another facilitator. Link Up is a contract with Bridgeway Recovery Services, the co-occurring mental health and ANDD program. SOAR, our flagship program that's been around since two thousand ten, has multiple contracts. And this is an extremely collaborative project between Sheriff's Office, Chameca County College, Health and Human Services, in providing, and our models look very similar. CADC, mentor, some of our staff, and whomever else we, that we contract with. The community resource center will also be here next week requesting approval for a contract with them or an amendment. But the community resource center, having them on campus, attached to our transition center, providing wraparound, you know, navigation services to get our folks that, I mean, out of our transition center are probably our highest recidivist population, and having them on campus readily being available to service that population is huge. But there's multiple positions associated with that as well. I think that hits the, the core. But it's a lot.
I, I think it's a lot. And I think what I want people to know is that this doesn't just impact the individual that's being provided the service. It's impacting their families. And most of these folks have spouses or partners and children. And every time we can help improve one individual's life through this program, the expansion of that throughout our community is vast, but it also saves money. And it's not just the fact that we're saving money on putting kids in foster care for whatever reason, because parents are in prison or can't get, can't return to care, all those things. It's, it's breaking the cycle of these kids' potential futures of being in the system long-term. And I think you can't really put a price on that. Every time I think about this, I think about those commercials where, you know, it's the opportunity is not the, the products that you're purchasing. And this is really funds that purchases life opportunities. And it's just a big deal. And I didn't know it existed before I became a commissioner. I had no idea. And I feel like I just want to constantly become a communication champion of people understanding that this matters. And Marion County does it right. And I'm really glad that, that we do do it right. So, thank you for being so invested. I know that this grant was a process to get through this last year, because there's different political views, I think, involved at the levels above us. And yourself and the DA and others did a really great job of making sure they understood what we're doing is what we're supposed to be doing. So...
Yeah, thank you. We do, we have a very, we're fortunate, Marion County. We have a very, very good team, not just in-house, but just with our, with our partners. But it's, yesterday, we had a Marion County Reentry Initiative, a collab, community collaborative meeting, and it just reminded me of how many different players are involved in this because we can't do this alone. And this started from way back in the day in oh-five with, you know, Commissioner Cameron and Janet Carlson, and the then, well, current UnderSheriff, Jeff Wood, and, and, and all the work that they've done to, to make this to where it's at today, because I'm just filling in the shoes and, and continuing the good work. But also too, it's, you just get better each, each biennium because you're noticing new gaps, holes, and you're trying to fill them, but with, with thoughtfulness. And so, we're, I'm, I feel, we feel blessed with the, the shop that we have and the team that we have, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Willis, do you have anything?
Commander, I'm gonna kind of say the same thing Danielle said, Commissioner Bethel said, which is, you, you give a ton of details, and then I get stuck and I sort of lose track of something. So, I think you already said this, but my question is, how does this amount of money compare to our previous award? Is it more or is it less?
I knew you were going to ask that question. Now, roughly from last biennium to this biennium, this is the, about six hundred thousand dollars between last and so.
Increase?
Roughly, increase.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the biennium before, I think maybe we saw fifteen thousand dollar difference. It was basically, well, if it's flat, it's less, just because of the amount of, everything just increases. But yeah, this was a good, this was a, this made sense. And it's, and it's not just to maintain status quo, but also to maybe do a little bit of enhancements and to the addition of this peer mentor program too. So, no, I feel, feel really fortunate. We ended up like this.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and Commissioner, I'll just follow up because Kevin knows, last, last biennium, we struggled getting baseline funding. And, and then this is six hundred thousand more plus the baseline funding we got this cycle really helped. Would you say the total budget's thirty-seven, thirty-four?
Total with everything, thirty-four-ish.
Yeah. And we stripped, I don't know, if you remember that, Commissioner, where we were saying, okay, what are we going to do in the second half of the biennium? And then they shut down the session, and we never got that funding. So, it's a much better biennium, but we got to keep at it every two years.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the population always seems to grow. I think it's important to follow the people and pay for the services. Okay, I'll take a motion.
So, I guess that's my turn, right?
It is.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve incoming funds in our governmental agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of four million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight pennies for the two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-three justice reinvestment grant retroactive from July first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commander, for coming and giving us the presentation and for all you do. All right. Okay, maybe I can take a breath for a second. I didn't, I'm sure I should be recovered from that odd disruption earlier, but it threw me off my game. So, Commissioner Willis, you were doing your emergency duties when we moved forward with the Ambulance Service Advisory Committee motion and vote.
Yes.
And I just wanted to give you the opportunity to state on the record your position.
I would like to vote aye.
Great, thank you. All three commissioners vote aye, and it passed unanimously. Thank you for that. And I'm going to read the calendar.
All right.
Today, oh gosh, okay, so today is January twenty-sixth, and we're here Wednesday, nine a.m. at Board Session, location Senator Hearing Room, First Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And then later, following Board Session, today, at eleven a.m., we have a BOC CAO meeting in the Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And then at noon today, we have a Marion County Extension Four-H Service District to review priorities and goals in two thousand twenty-one tax revenue, the Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And then at one fifteen, we have a BOC CAO meeting, Executive Session if needed pursuant to ORS one-nine-two-six-six-zero-two-A-B-D-E-F-H-I in the Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor. And then we are headed to Jefferson at two-thirty today for the City of Jefferson Water Treatment Plant Ribbon Cutting Ceremony in Open House, located at the City of Jefferson Public Works Department, seven hundred North Second Street. And then tomorrow, Thursday, the twenty-seventh, at nine a.m., we have a Work Session for Emergency Management Program Overview in the Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And then at one-thirty tomorrow, we have a Work Session for Forest Service Update, the Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And then at three p.m. tomorrow, the twenty-seventh, we have a Union Gospel Mission Tour and Discussion, located at the Union Gospel Mission, the brand-new one, at seven-seven-seven Commercial Street Northeast. And then next week, on Tuesday, starting February first, we have a Management Update in the Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And Tuesday at twelve, we have a Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance Executive Committee Meeting, which is virtual. And on Tuesday, the first, at two p.m., we have a Service District Meeting for the Illahi, Brooks, Fargo, LaBish Service Districts in the Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And then Wednesday, the second, at nine a.m., we have Board Session, location Senator Hearing Room, First Floor, five-five-five Court Street. And then Wednesday, the second, at twelve, we have the City's Marion County Meeting, location Rodeo Inn at four-one-seven-one Blanchett Avenue Northeast in St. Paul. And then on Wednesday, the second, at one fifteen, we have a BOC CAO meeting, Executive Session if pursuant to ORS one-nine-two dot six-six-zero-two-A-B-D-E-F-H-I, location Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five-five-five Court Street. I'm just going to say that I'm excited that we have finally organized our community breakfast or luncheons to go into some of the other communities next week on Wednesday when we're in St. Paul.
That was a long time coming, wasn't it?
It, it only took a year. But that's because it's just so difficult to coordinate everybody's calendars, and I'm really grateful for the staff that chased that. But mostly, I'm excited to see who comes, the new people that we get to meet. I mentioned it to Dan from the St. Paul Fire this morning and asked him if he would come. He did say, where? I said, I have no idea, but I'll let you know. So, he goes, we have a coffee shop. And I said, I think we need something bigger than a coffee shop.
It's a bit of a surprise to him.
I think it's the rodeo. Isn't, is the rodeo inn?
It is at the rodeo inn, yeah. But I didn't know that this morning. I couldn't even find it on my calendar, frankly, when I was looking through it on my phone.
There's a bar across the street from their city hall. The, they're not city hall, they're...
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
I think that's where we're going.
And I remember walking in there one time, we were holding a town hall, and, you know, it was a bunch of working folks there after work. And I walked in in a suit, and the entire bar turned and looked at me.
Great.
Like, what are you doing here? But then, once we got to chatting, they were pretty happy I was there, so.
Oh, good. Well, I think it'll be great. What I just want to say to the, to everyone listening is that as we go into these communities, folks are welcome to attend. You don't have to just be a city official. If you are just a member of the, of one of the communities and you want to have a conversation, show up. I think it's important for us to be able to do that, and this gives us the opportunity to share a cup of coffee or a meal and just have that organic person-to-person discussion outside of what I think this might be an intimidating environment for some, to come and chat in. So, maybe we'll see folks next week at the rodeo inn in St. Paul.
That would be great.
Yeah. How was your weekend last weekend?
Good. You know, one of the things, what do we do? We, we had a fun event. We went to the, the Kaiser Chamber banquet, right?
Was there some special award for somebody?
And the First Citizen Award. And our own Commissioner Bethel, Chair Bethel, won the award. What was it, Service and Education?
That's right. I was honored with the Service to Education Award, and it was a complete surprise. I'm still surprised. It makes me a little choked up, to be honest.
It was great.
And it's neat for people to say thanks for all those years of work before I was even, you know, kind of on the front lines of, of the public. And when Tammy Reddy, who was presenting me the award, started listing off all the projects, not that I have forgotten any of them, but it was a nice venture down memory lane and all of the work it took to raise all that money. And Nathan, my husband and I were talking later, and he, he goes, I don't remember this project. And I said, oh, seriously? There was one particular project, the softball project for McNary High School, that was exceptionally difficult to even get going. It was expensive, and it was challenging, and girls' sports don't ever receive the same recognition as boy's sports in America. And anyway, I was able to acquire the funds and the labor to get it done. And then, like, thirteen months later, the school district bond passed, and I received a personal call from the Chief Executive Officer of the district to let me know that they were going to demolish that field.
Oh, no.
And they did. They, they wiped it out, and they relocated it. And the girls' softball program has a beautiful pro, field. It's, it's great. But I was like...
That hurts.
Are you kidding me? It took like three years to get that done. But the senior girls that helped me raise that money were able to play one full season on that field before they graduated, and it meant a lot. So...
There you go.
Anyway, it was a great night, and I just, I'm thankful for everybody who said yes to all the crazy ideas that we had in Kaiser to help kids. So, anyway.
It was a good night.
Thank you guys for coming to that award banquet, by the way.
It was packed.
It was packed.
A lot of people were there. They were happy to be there.
They, we were, that's the first time we've been together as like a community since COVID.
Yeah.
But also, the, the citizens there acknowledged that you both were there. That's a big deal to these small towns. And I know it's awkward to stand up and wave, but they're like, oh, they're here.
Well, there's a lot of friends there, you know. It was nice to, nice to see her.
And the District Attorney came.
And her husband's.
Yep. She was, she's a hoot.
We had a lot of fun.
Yeah. So, anyway, is there anything else you want to add before we close this meeting up?
Just, we got a full day today, so we kind of have to get to it.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Well, with that, then we'll adjourn. Have a great day, everybody.